Oops.
Hey, Bob.
Larry, how are you?
Larry, it's all right. Good evening, everyone. Tony Gonzalez calling together tonight's planning board meeting for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. We have a short agenda tonight. We'll review and accept last month's meetings, lot releases. We have planning board elections this evening. We do have a request for continuance for return to ZBA 244 and 252 Warren Ave. We have a return to ZBA 70 Westgate Drive, a site plan review for 45 Industrial Boulevard, a definitive subdivision for Braymore Road Extension. And I get that address right? I did, right, Evan, number four, because you corrected that. All right. So we'll do a roll call. Matthew Gallagher.
Here.
Marty Kroll.
Here.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Tony Gonzalez is present. We have one planning board member off, so there is the four of us. Okay. Is there a motion to accept last month's minutes?
Motion to accept.
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Matthew.
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you. Evan, you have one listed for planning board elections. Don't usually do that at the end.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
You can do it at the beginning or at the end if you want.
Move that down and start with, is there a motion for a continuance for 244 and 252 Warren Ave?
Motion to continue.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Okay, moving right along. We are now reviewing 70 Westgate Drive, return to ZBA. Representative is Sign Design LLC. Is the representative here?
Marie over. I'm sorry, I got stuck in something.
Need Evan's help?
Nope, got it now.
Okay. Good evening, Marie.
Hi, how are you? Evening. I believe that my client and another coworker should be in the wings also. Wiley Knight, oh, there he is. And then Dr. Patrick Assorian. Is there a Patrick?
Patrick, yes. And the gang's all here.
Good evening.
There we go. All right. So my name is Marie Mercier. I'm with Sign Design. And we're here with my coworker Wiley Knight, representing Dr. Patrick Assorian for his dentistry on 7 Westgate Drive. We originally had went to the ZBA and had talked to them, I forget when it was, but a while back. And they had, everybody on the board, I mean, they did this as one full package, but everybody on the board had liked our pylon. It was basically the EMC that they wanted us to come in front of the board with. But it all got sent back to you because it's as one package. So do I need to share my screen with everybody?
Yes, please.
Bear with me.
If you could focus on the changes, the new and substantial differentiate from the previous sign.
Yep, just give me one second. I'm not a great sharer. I just have to get, find my screen here.
I've been told that about myself.
Here, where's my Here we go. So let me grab the work order number. Oh, my goodness. My goodness. Hold on. I apologize.
Okay.
1688. Did it come up? Is everybody seeing it?
We see an order status, a work order.
I did that. All right, hang on, let me.
There's a PDF down bottom layout. I don't know if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, that was. Does this one come up?
No.
You need to unshare and then reshare.
Oh, this PDF, hold on. No. Is that, do you see that? Oh, yeah, she, my screen was paused.
So un, unshare your screen and then reshare the screen.
Stop sharing. Share. This is that. There it is. All right. Perfect. Thank you for walking me through that. So as we're looking on the screen, this is the pylon that we have proposal, proposing. It is a triangle shaped signage to see it from all access where this location is located on 70 Westgate Drive.
This is at the main intersection when you're pulling, taking either a left coming from the highway or?
Yes. Patrick, is that correct? I know where it is, but when you come off the highway, yeah, you take a left and go into the property.
So here's.
The bowling alley is like basically kind of across the street.
Yeah, I see where you are. Okay.
Yeah.
So you have, if you look on the bottom, good evening, everyone. If you look at the bottom, Ryan Memorial. So you have the, the area that has the dashes is the parking lot. In front of that, if you scroll down a little bit, there is a little bit of a triangular kind of where in front of the pylon, the picture of the pylon. And so it's like that grassy area. So we're putting it in the parking lot behind the grass area so that, and it's elevated. And so the people from all sides can, can see it and, and, and because it has to be placed on the inside of the, of the parking lot. And so that's where you can see the picture on the bottom where the triangular purple or pink is, you can see that where the location would be in the parking lot on what Mary is, is showing. And, and Wiley connected with the electrical asper indicated in the last, in the last meeting. They wanted to make sure that this was fine with the, is it N-Star or whatever the company wants. And he got, you know, he got their, their approval basically to do that. You, you see a wire going just on top. So this one's going to be done in, in ground, so to speak. And.
I'm, I'm sorry. So is this the changed?
No, it's not. So this was the, the, the
Original.
This, this was the, yeah. And, and where the, where the panel, the panel or the board last time had an issue is, was the, not this one, if you can go up to the EMC from the, from the meeting. And so the EMC, the orange is what, what was presented, the the initial size of the orange. And so we went back and we gave him, we got a smaller, a smaller EMC. They wanted the slides to go every, I think every, is it five seconds or 10 seconds? And we were talking fine. But they wanted the, from, you know, from, from the feedback that we got, they wanted EMC to be smaller. And so the orange is the initial rendering that was proposed. And as you can see in both options, option one or option two, it's been reduced. Obviously, you know, I'd rather have option two, but option one is also acceptable. And so we, that's, that's what we, you know, that's what the board had recommended. The EMC was too big and they wanted it smaller.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Or can I open up to the board members?
I think Patrick Howard did. You can probably open it to the board members. Do you want me to stop this, stop the sharing or leave it on?
Leave it open in case they have questions, questions from board members.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, on the ZBA, this one, I had voted in favor, just for the sake of the board's knowledge. I think it was a three to two vote. I just, you know, just, it was, it was a close vote. I guess that's kind of what I want to, a voice of what to kind of get the board up to speed on kind of how that went. And some of the concerns were a little bit of distraction to drivers, but that's, that's, that, that was the outcome.
Okay, thank you for that because I really don't see an issue with this. But Marty or?
Man, if, if I could just ask a couple of questions, it's difficult for me. I went over there yesterday to see, so is it going to be in the back of the building? Or on the side of the building?
If we can show a Google map. So this is the, this is, and it's not the back and it's not the front. It's this aside, yes, it's a side.
The side facing the parking lot.
Right here.
That is right.
The building back here. Could you see my little carousel in the back? It's on the side of that building in the parking lot.
Okay, so what, what I read from our report was, one of the concerns was distraction to the drivers. And in other words, it's going to keep changing, right?
So I think the board had asked for five seconds. I mean, I'd be fine going to 10 seconds like to me. And the transition, the transition is important. And so there's a transition in the computerization called dissolve. So it's a very subtle transition of, of the picture. And I'm fine increasing the seconds to whatever the board of your board or the other board, I don't exactly know the names, but whatever, you know, the board wants 10, 5, 10, 15 seconds, like it's totally fine. And, and the transition, I think that the important part is that, I mean, this is not a PowerPoint thing, but we can choose a very, a transition that's the most, that's less destructive to the eye. And there's a transition in PowerPoint called dissolve that, that is the, it just like, it's the least, the least invasive, so to speak. You know what I'm saying? It's not the one, the, the page that flips or the thing that goes up. It's just it's a dissolve and, and, and if, if the board wants a dissolve transition, that's totally fine. Because that will be based on basically a computer system and I've asked, and they can do that dissolve transition. And if the board wants to increase the number of seconds, totally fine, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever the board feels comfortable with.
What do you have it at now?
Madam?
For the seconds?
Yes.
It's, we'll set it to whatever you, you tell.
What was your proposal? Because I mean, I, I honestly, in my opinion, we, we're driver skilled drivers. We have to drive in Vegas when we go on vacation, we have to drive in New York with these signs. I, I, I really don't see a problem with this flashing sign.
Thanks, I had originally said about eight seconds, but we did say that would go up to 10 or 15, whatever the board wants.
What, Jim, what did, what did the board want?
As far as timing, I don't, I don't believe we, we actually got to that or even discussed it much, if at all. But it is, that, that would, in my opinion, just if I could, that would definitely address some significance and kind of quell the concerns, just in my.
All right, so 10 seconds.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Because this is adjacent to a Mastat road, controlled road, the refresh rate or the, the, how quickly the image can stay on cannot be less than 10 seconds.
Okay.
And it needs to be a smooth transition. I mean, turning fuzzy and coming it back, you know, the, the blurred dissolve. I mean, it needs to be just like the billboards that we have in the city that Sign Design has put up. I mean, it's a very quick transition. It's not blurred or doesn't dissolve and it doesn't, because that causes more confusion.
So it's smooth. I don't know. What do you call that in this technology? Smooth?
Wiley, do you know?
Quick transition.
Yeah, whatever it is, we'll make it happen. It'll just be one image to the next.
All right.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Sure, you can.
Thank you. Is this going to replace the sign that you have now that sits on top of the building?
Yes, there is a sign that's totally useless that the facing, as a matter of fact,
One side of the top.
Yes, fell about a week ago. And, and absolutely. So this sign would be coming off. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, just one more thing, if I could. So I've asked these folks questions on the ZBA. And one of them that I asked was, I thought it was a good opportunity to tap into the community on the big board against the wall. And the owner of the business was in favor of getting in, in touch with the community, community messaging, whatever that may be. I just think that's a piece from the ZBA that might be beneficial to this board.
Totally. Yeah.
Okay, nice. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was going to bring, James, I was going to bring that up, that we had said that we had put on like any amber alerts, any community things going on in the city that, you know, coming together, whether there was something going on at Campagnelli Stadium or anything to have to do with the town, the city.
Wonderful. I like that.
I like that, too.
And happy, happy Christmas Day, happy Christmas Day. You know, we will put those as well, you know, the holidays, primary and secondary and, and anything that deals with the town, absolutely. And as a matter of fact, we'd like to put the staff, you know, got involved and they're excited about that. I said, we have a meeting. Hopefully, we're going to have a, we're going to have this passed and to be presented then to the, back to the, the other board. And they said, we'd love to have, you know, true pictures of the patients and that would be like something people are going to be, you know, relating to and all that. So we definitely want to make it part of the community and, and, and include some, you know, any, any activity or community affairs or anything like that. We'd be more than happy to message that and use that.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Well, this meet the criteria to go back to the ZBA?
I think so.
Because what's the sense to send it back if they're just going to turn it down again?
Well, they're meeting the 10 seconds, the quick transition. They're involving the community. They've made the sign smaller. They placed it in a little different area, in my opinion.
I think the biggest concern was the traffic, if I, if I can, Madam Chair. And by addressing the timing on it is significant as far as distraction for traffic.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, good.
But I mean, honestly, we have to step it up in the city. I mean, I'm not comparing us to Vegas, but one little sign. You know, we're in New York. I mean, anywhere, Florida has them. What do they have them? All right, is this open for public?
Tony, I have one. I have a few. Thanks. I just haven't been able to talk about it enough. So yeah, I just want to make sure that who, who is responsible for making sure that those rules and regulations are, are met? Like Rob had brought up that it's a 10 second transition period. Who's responsible for making sure that those are enforced?
The building department.
Okay, who on the, the technology side is making sure? Because it seems like you had to feed that information. So I just want to make sure that they're aware of the, the rules and regs and that they're following them.
We will definitely let them know.
And this is Dr. Assarian Patrick who is here tonight. This is his business and his building. So I'm sure he is on the agenda here. So he, you know, has spoke. I'm sure he will make sure. Because he, you know, wants to be able to use the sign. So I'm sure he's not going to disobey the 10 second rule.
Get his hand slapped.
Madam Chair, if I could, I know there's a division of Mastat that Rob had already mentioned for, for signage that regulates the time. They also, they regulate just about everything for commercial signage. Does this sign fall under that jurisdiction where they can control mess, messaging? There's certain things you can and cannot put on a, a message board, I believe, and that regulation falls under the state if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Can anyone chime in on that? Is that something that's going to fall under this regulation?
It should, it does, because it, it's adjacent to a state highway numbered system, state jurisdiction road. And so the building department will make that information available when they apply for the building permit. So that's Bill Forte.
Okay.
Department.
All right.
Matthew, did you have more questions?
I know. So thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, is this open for public?
Yes, ma'am. If there's anybody in the public who would like to speak about the sign application or the return to ZBA, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen to let us know that you would like to speak. And Madam Chair, at this time, we do not have anyone that would like to speak.
Okay, is there a motion with some conditions, 10 second changing?
Madam Chair, we can't condition it. We can just say whether it's sufficient to return to ZBA.
As long as all these are built into it, right?
Well, that, that'll be the building department.
I'd like to motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Marty?
Yes.
You moved around on my screen. Matthew?
Yes.
Sorry, James?
Yes.
All right, Tony, yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have 45 Industrial Boulevard. This is also a return to, no, site plan review. Is Scott here?
Scott, forward now.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
How are you?
Hey, Scott.
Very good, thank you. Scott Farrier from Home Grant Engineering, representing Operation One Roof. They do business under Bay State Lemon at 45 Industrial Boulevard. And I'm going to share my screen as I'm talking, Madam Chair. All right. Is that showing up to everybody?
Yes, look at that. You're a pro now.
Just in time for the governor's mandate to end in a couple of weeks. So we have this big site, Madam Chair, at the, what used to be the end of Industrial Boulevard, formerly probably up until about five years ago, it was known as Zoot's Laundry System. It's right across the street from WB Mason. And they've got a substantial business there. Right now, they have an existing 46,000 square foot building. And they're proposing to add a 70, 71,000 square foot addition shown around the existing building, kind of in this orange color. In addition to really increasing their business, their biggest problem with their current site layout is they don't have any room for loading docks or trailers. So this new addition, there's an existing parking lot that is used by all of their employees and an existing driveway that goes behind the building. We're expanding that driveway, expanding the, the paved area down in this location. So we can now provide loading docks. So we have a, a total of 14 dock spaces for vans and box trucks. And then 13 loading docks for, for bigger trucks. They'll be able to load and unload, swing around and head through the, the property, either through Industrial Boulevard in this direction or back out the existing entrance on the westerly side of the property. So that's our proposal. We've gone, we've had two tech review meetings. We've gone through a, a whole bunch of changes with Conservation Commission in there, peer review consultant beta. We received an order of conditions. At our last tech review, the only issue that came up was the request to make sure that the water, the water service, the water main was looped around the building, being such a big building, and also that there was a hydrant at the rear of the, at the rear of the building. And we have shown that on the plans. I, I believe Deputy, Deputy Chief made that comment. So we've, we've made those changes. And that was really the, the last comment that we had to address from any city officials, Madam Chair.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Questions from board members? I do not have any. Marty?
Looks good to me.
All right, Matthew?
Looks great.
Jim?
Oh, looks pretty clean and it looks like, you know, what that area is designed for. So no.
I agree. Good job, Scott. Wow.
It's the potato.
You aced this one. It's A plus. And you got it right up there on the screen for us.
You left us speechless.
That's fair. This group is very fair. So anyone from the public have their hands up?
Ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you're watching this broadcast and would like to speak, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you hover your mouse over the bottom of the screen, you'll see the menu pop up with a hand raising symbol. And Madam Chair, do you not see anyone raising their hand at this time?
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to, uh. No, you go ahead.
Motion to approve. Again.
All right, roll call. Marty?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Tony, yes, with standard conditions, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Scott.
You're not going anywhere, Scott. You're up next again, right? Braymore Road Extension, definitive subdivision, JK, JK Home Grant Engineering.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Board members, I also have Attorney Burke. I'm sure hovering out there somewhere or Rob could possibly bring him forward.
Do I have? Here he comes.
Yeah, I know. I said the same thing, but he texted me and asked really nicely if I'd make sure that you brought him forward, Rob, so. I had no choice.
Should be, you should be there.
I think I made it.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Mr. Planner, Madam Chairwoman.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks. Let, let me just start off briefly and then Scott can get to the important stuff. Just by history, this was the, the third triangle of development that resulted from the Kearney family that own a substantial piece of property, roughly about 60 acres, that ran here from Braymore, almost to Pleasant Street. It was a, a concept that was reviewed extensively by members of the local council, councils at large and other members of the city of Brockton. And there were some concerns raised, and I, I know you've seen this before because we involved you in Amelia Estates. But for those that may not have been on the board, there was a concern about a through traffic that would go from Braymore all the way to Pleasant Street. The net result was that Scott and others designed three separate divisions, Cypress, Amelia. And now this is the, the last of the property to be developed, which is Braymore. And Braymore was brought before the zoning board of appeals and it was successfully given a variance for 12 lots. I, I think that the spacing that we did with due consideration to comments that were given to us by members of the city and the zoning board resulted in a very good subdivision that will match very well with the surrounding neighborhood. So that having been said, Scott will give you the important stuff. And thank you for letting me address.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Burke. As Attorney Burke said, what, what we are, what we're left with is a subdivision that creates 12 lots. We're extending Braymore Road, which currently is just a dead end road. It's about a 300 foot dead end road from, from Roger Road, I believe it is, that goes about 300 feet. We're going to be extending it another 700 feet to the end of our cul-de-sac. That creates the frontage required for our 12 lots. We have a considerable drainage system. There's, there's really a, a big slope on the property from the kind of the northeast corner up here on the, the top right of your page, all the way down to the bottom of the property. And as Attorney Burke said, back before Cypress, which is above us, was built and Amelia Estates, Lodi Lane to the side of us was built, all of this property and, uh, Amelia Estates, Lodi Lane to the side of us was built, all of this property kind of shed down the road uh, to the properties on Briar Cliff. And, uh, by the, the construction of both Cypress and Amelia, it's kind of intercepted a lot of that water. Uh, there's a large detention basin up on the top of the screen here in Cypress, a big detention basin, uh, just off of our lots on Amelia. And, uh, we're proposing essentially the same thing, two large detention basins that, uh, that handle the hundred year storm event, as required, will be filing, uh, with the Brockton Stormwater Authority uh, after tonight's, uh, meeting, uh, to get their approval. We don't, uh, we don't foresee any, any changes at all being made to that. Uh, and, uh, the only other, uh, part of this that, that is, uh, I, I guess of interest to the board, we are not at this point. Uh, we withdrew any waiver requests that we had for roadway construction. Uh, after talking to the Planning Department, it was felt like the, uh, existing roadways out on Braymore are, uh, constructed at thirty-four feet wide with granite curving and sidewalks. And it would make sense that we continue that same construction through our roadway. So we're not asking for any uh, roadway construction waivers that we would, uh, typically request of the board on, on other developments, so, uh, really, that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Scott, you know Cypress there, I remember the houses that are, um, to the top of the plan here, they complained about water with that big detention that you had put in there. I don't know if that was resolved, it's not part of this plan here, but I see that there's some, um, hanging, lingering concerns the city engineer has to approve in regards to stormwater. Um, can you speak to, are you aware of what his concerns are, and can you speak to that?
Uh, I, I don't know of any concerns on Cypress, uh, you know, that's been constructed, it's a large basin, it is.
I mean, for Braymore, I'm sorry, Scott, I don't mean to confuse you, but I brought Cypress up, cause I remember there being issues.
That's right.
Now, this is Braymore, and I think the city engineer still has some.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure he has, uh, some comments, Madam Chair, we're, we're, uh, certainly aware that we need to address those through the stormwater process. There's, uh, the Stormwater Authority has kind of been in limbo for the last year essentially. And, uh, as of last week, actually, the, the last Wednesday in February, they're back up and running, so we actually uh, do have a, a voting seeded Stormwater Authority, and, and we'll have to bring all of these projects. Uh, you know, site plans, subdivisions, all of these projects will have to go to them, uh, to, to get their approval as well, so we'll, uh, we'll address any concerns that, uh, that the city engineer or anybody else on that board has at that time, Madam Chair, but we, we don't see that there's gonna be any, uh, any significant changes to the plan that we have before you.
And will these houses have sprinkler systems?
I didn't mention that. We do have, uh, one other important part, uh, of this, these three subdivisions is there is a looped water main, uh, that goes through, so Braymore, uh, the water main goes out the back of Braymore and out onto Lodi Lane uh, around their detention basin. So that is, uh, one thing, and I, and I do believe the sprinkler systems were brought up in condition at the ZBA, Madam Chair, I believe that was, uh, one of their conditions.
Okay, so it's in your plan, or?
Uh, the notation of the sprinkler systems wouldn't be, but it would be in the, in the ZBA's decision that would, uh, that would get recorded.
Yes, go ahead. If you'd let me interrupt, because I had to go look at the decision. Yes, uh, Madam Chairwoman, uh, the decision requires, uh, as a condition, that the houses be sprinkled.
All right, thank you, very good. Um, does the fire chief have any questions or concerns?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so yes, that's what I was, what I was gonna ask about was because we're over seven hundred feet, um, is the main looped, so, um, so Scott, this is a definitive plan, we're definitely looping the, the main, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so that, and along with the sprinkler systems, because of the remoteness of the dead end, I'm, I'm satisfied with this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, Marty, anything?
Oh, I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Jim?
No, I, I think I'm good. Um, the sprinkler was, was the biggest one, and they've, this has been a long time, uh, in the pipeline, so I, I'm all set.
All right, Matthew?
Uh, sprinkler was a big one for me, um, but I love what they did on Cypress Drive, so I think we're gonna love this too.
Yeah. All right, um, open to public?
Ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you would like to comment on this proposal uh, for subdivision, uh, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the page. Let us know that you would like to address the board. And Madam Chair, we do not have anyone using the icon.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve with standard conditions.
Second. And final approval is contingent upon the review and approval by the city engineer?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Marty, second that, roll call, um, Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, folks, have a good night.
Um, Madam Chair.
Before the applicants leave, all right. Madam Chair, if I could, um, I just wanted to confirm surety. What you guys, what, what you guys wanna do for surety? Scott and, and Jim?
Um, to be honest with you, I'm not sure, I don't know if Attorney Burke.
I, 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 I think it would be the, uh, standard, uh, lot, lot release, uh, Scott.
Yeah, I would think we would put up lots to, to get some of, uh, put up the majority of lots to, to get some lots released, I would think, Isaiah.
Sure, all right.
I also think we need to do a waiver for the extension of four hundred feet.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Okay. All right, um, is there a motion for the waiver?
Could I, did I just get clarity on what the waiver is?
Well, they're extending the road, um, four hundred feet to Dead End Street, but we clarified the sprinklers issue and the fire chief doesn't have any issue, so I do not. Any further questions on this?
Gotcha, thank you.
No problem. All right, is there a motion for the, to approve the waiver?
Yeah, motion to approve the waiver.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tony? Yes, all right, thanks.
Thank you for that, Madam Chair.
Now you can go, Scott.
Now you can leave. Pause, 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 you have one more waiver, you have to do frontage as well.
No, I thought we didn't have to.
You know, many of these are deficient in frontage, so they need a frontage waiver.
Okay.
There's, I have the list called up on the screen, Madam Chair.
All right, go ahead, present away.
Uh, lot one, one hundred and thirty-two ninety-three. Lot two, one hundred fifty-eight twenty-three, lot three, one hundred thirty-five ten. Lot four, one hundred thirty point two oh, lot five, one forty point four three. Lot six, one oh eight seventy-five at the setback. Lot seven, one twelve fifty-three at the setback. Lot eight, one hundred point oh five at the setback. Lot nine, one thirty-nine ninety-three, lot ten, one thirty, lot eleven, one thirty-one seventy-eight. Lot twelve, one sixty point one seven, lot thirteen does not exist, and I'm not sure why it's there. Lots one through twelve.
And I wanna buy the one with the shortest, shortest frontage, so less yard to mow.
Less Saturday work, I agree.
All right, is there a motion?
The, I'm motion to approve frontage waiver, uh, uh, lots one through twelve.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, roll call, James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Anything else, Mr. Evan, before I let this, these gentlemen go?
That should be it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, folks, thanks for being.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott, thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Now we're up for planning board elections, boy, this comes quickly every year. Um, do you conduct them, Rob, or do you?
Um, Evan does.
Evan does, okay.
I'm ducking out of that.
I do. Um, no, so basically you have four, uh, officer positions, same ones you do every year. It, it works the same way as, uh, anything you do, you're, someone's gonna nominate someone, someone's gonna second that nomination, then you guys will vote on it. So you have chair, you have the clerk, which is basically the vice chair. Then you have the designee for the ZBA and the designee for the, uh, traffic commission. You just go through each of those.
So I, I guess just point of deliberation here, uh, for the sake of to, you know, I, I thoroughly enjoy doing what I'm doing, I'm willing to continue, if you guys, uh, so see me willing to do that, so.
Thank you, we appreciate that, I know I do.
Yeah, and, you know, same with, uh, it takes a while to build your knowledge and kind of get, you know, uh, and be a, a valued asset to bring back between boards, so it's, it takes a while, so.
I nominate James to be the ZBA and the traffic.
And I'd second that.
Okay, roll call, Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Tony, yes. James?
Yes.
You'll accept, thank you very much.
And I wanna not nominate Tony to be the chairwoman.
Second.
All right, roll call, Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Thank you, Marty, for that nomination, and the rest of you for, um, being in favor. Anything else, Evan?
Vice Chair.
Clerk and Vice Chair.
So does Orlando still want it? I don't know.
He's not here, so nominate him.
You can't nominate him, or you can?
No, you can, that's what you get for missing the meeting.
Orlando's nominated.
Motion to nominate Orlando, that's been all.
Second.
For Vice Chair.
Marty?
Yes.
Marty, Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tony, yes, congratulations, Orlando, you'll get it emailed.
You'll see it in the video.
Yeah, all right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, last one, Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tony, yes, all right, good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Um, is it person or did we get an extension to do it?
That is still up in the air, um.
I'm hoping for an extension.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm gonna, uh, I'll be in touch with you guys.
All right, sounds good.
Is there anything to sign?
Not yet, um, not yet, guys.
The attendance sheet for this evening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look for that, Isaiah, thank you.
I'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay, good night.
All right, bye, everybody, have a good night.
All right, everyone.